He does. Am I happy here?
Good evening. I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is the September 15th Board of Education meeting. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sue, if you would please give the roll call.
William Baumgart. Cory Montiel.
Here.
Greg Dietz.
Here.
Amanda Raddi.
Here.
Kelly Piasik.
Here.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Here.
Anthony Zenobia.
Here.
Karen Reinacek.
Joseph Como.
Thank you. President Como is excused this evening. Sue, would you please verify that the meeting has been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Great. Thank you very much. Tonight, we're going to move right into bright lights, and we will have Lynette Kalmidge and Janika Sabotnick from the Waukesha Education Foundation here for a special presentation. Ladies.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for inviting us here to speak with you. My name is Lynette Kalmidge. I'm the Executive Director with the Waukesha Education Foundation, and joining me this evening is one of our Board Directors, Janika Sabotnick. Janika not only chairs our Grant and Allocation Committee, but she also spearheads our raffle and auction process for our events, serves on our marketing and business outreach team, and has a very active role in just about every single event we put on. She is a 2018 grad of Waukesha West. She was a recipient of one of our WEF scholarships. She served as our intern through Carroll University during her sophomore year in college, and now she is on our Board of Directors. She is homegrown through the School District of Waukesha and is a senior at Carroll University and the Community Relations Program intern at Generec. Our organization would really not be where we are today if it weren't for her efforts. She is an amazing young woman. So, Janika, thank you for joining me this evening, and for all you do, I appreciate you. As most of you know, the Waukesha Education Foundation, also known as WEF, is an independent 501(c)(3) organization dedicated to supporting the district's educators through our annual grant program and awarding talented graduating seniors through our scholarship program. Both the foundation and these programs have had unprecedented growth over the last several years. While we are not technically part of the district, we appreciate the wonderful support and partnership we have with the district. We are living in a climate filled with negative headlines and often a lot of stress. I am honored to be here this evening for a few minutes to celebrate the positives. I am proud of what our organization has accomplished since its inception, and I am proud of the incredible growth we've had just in the last few years. Despite economic turndowns, global pandemics, a non-traditional school year, and much disagreement about the best way to handle things, WEF has remained a steadfast, positive influencer on education and the students in this school district. So, please allow me to highlight just a few things. Number one, WEF is pleased to share that we now have 23 annual sponsors who contribute anywhere between $1,000 and $5,000 to our organization annually. Our annual sponsorships now total $37,500 a year. This is in comparison to three short years ago when we had approximately eight annual sponsors totaling $9,500. Number two, WEF was pleased to award 43 scholarships totaling $29,225 to our 2020 graduates. This year, we have already added to that total, and the school year has just started. In 2021, we will again have a record year for scholarships. That is good news for students in Waukesha. WEF awarded over $35,000 in grants to educators in May of 2021, and these grants, as we speak, are coming alive in classrooms and buildings across our district. In the meantime, our 2020 grant winners have been given an entire extra school year to complete their projects, many of which were based on collaboration and hands-on learning, clearly a challenge during a school year like we had last year. WEF applauds all of our grant winners, and actually, all of our applicants, for taking the time during such a challenging time in history to do more and be innovators in their classrooms. At the end of this presentation, we will present a symbolic check to the district for the full amount of our 2021 classroom grants that are alive and well in our buildings this year. At your seats, you will find a list of the 2021 recipients by school. We're very excited to see what these dollars will bring back to students. As a side note, and it's a big side note, WEF has awarded over $600,000 in grants and scholarships since our inception in 2004. Number four, WEF was thrilled to host our 15th Annual Golf Outing this past August and had 146 golfers, which is a new record. Thank you to those of you who attended. We also sold out our golf event sponsorships this year, an accomplishment that is only underscored by the fact that we have done all of this during a time when businesses in our area are still dealing with challenges surrounding the pandemic. Number five, the Evening for Education, our largest fundraising event of the year, will be held on October 21st at the Milwaukee Marriott West in Waukesha. Information about this event can be found on our landing page, and we have a special offer for all School District of Waukesha employees, including school board members, that will offer you discount seating. We have a few sponsorships left, so if you, your employer, or someone you know is interested in securing one of these sponsorships, please reach out to me. At this event, we celebrate all things in our Waukesha schools. We recognize our grant recipients, and we honor both our 2020 and our 2021 WEF Award winners. This year, we will be honoring our Corporate Partner Awards, which will be going to Meyer and Delzer Lithograph, our Community Partner Award, which will be given to RSVP Program, and St. Luke's Church Child Life Ministries. And finally, we will honor our Sally Jo Michelko Lifetime Excellence Education Awards, and those will be presented to Dr. Todd Gray and Diane Voight. We hope you will attend this celebration to celebrate these organizations and these individuals and the contributions that they are making or have made in our schools. There's information at your desk about how to get to that landing page. The event sold out in 2019, and public ticket sales just opened, and we already have over 160 people coming. If you would like to come, please purchase your tickets as soon as possible, and if you're not a buy online kind of person, you know, you can just call or reach out to me, and I will help you. And finally, we are pleased to debut our 2021 Challenge Fund video with you this evening, created by our very talented Board Member and Marketing Business Outreach Chair, Felicia Carrillo. But first, just some background. In late 2020, a former WEF Board Member reached out to us and offered a donation to create what they would like called the WEF Leadership Fund. Growth is a great thing, but as you can imagine, sometimes organizations grow faster than their budgets do. This individual wanted to create a fund where current and WEF Board Members, current and former school board members, district administration, and other district leaders that could contribute and make an impact. They created an endowed fund in place to provide some extra dollars to help fund projects, equipment, and initiative that will support our organization's growth without having to go into our operating budget. They have offered to match up to $10,000 in donations, which is amazing. We wanted to make this special, so we thought we would start from the beginning. Over the last several months, we have been networking with some former Board Members and district leaders to get a little bit of perspective.
...that in the beginning, when it was just a few thousand dollars that we were able to... Oh, we're a quarter of a million dollars that I've been giving, and I think that is just... That's so fabulous, and that's something everybody should know about.
The Waukesha Education Foundation's beginning was fueled by the dedication and fortitude of a few educators who saw a need in a community they loved. Today, with the help of our community partners and generous supporters, the foundation continues to grow and impact the Waukesha community.
After, really, after I was done teaching, myself and Ellen Langel and Sally Hansen Nap Tell, who had all of us had been teachers, and we were really, we just had a casual conversation with Dave Schmidt, who was superintendent then, about the needs to support teachers. So, I think it got us all thinking about if teachers could have some additional money that could support some of those creative, innovative things that they want. How exciting that would be.
Nearly two decades later, the foundation has grown from a small Board of Dedicated Educators to a larger board made of a diverse group of educators, community leaders, and an executive director.
So, I'm Lynette Kalmidge. I'm the Executive Director of the Waukesha Education Foundation, and I've been with the foundation since March of 2018. I am also the first official employee and the only employee of the foundation. My goal as the Director is to continue fundraising, to continue identifying opportunities, to increase the balance in our endowment, so that those endowed funds can then turn around and be given back to educators and students. We were really lucky to have a donor come to us at the end of 2020 and offer a challenge grant. The donor wanted to remain anonymous, but was somebody that was involved in leadership within the foundation previously, and wanted to challenge other leaders, both within the Education Foundation itself, within the School District, and within the Board of Education, to give back to the foundation in the same way that she did. So, they have offered to match up to $10,000 in donations from former Board, current Board, Board of Education, and district administration, so that we can continue to grow and become more valuable to our community. The money raised through this challenge is really going to go back to the foundation itself and allow our Board a little bit of leeway when we have projects that come up that we definitely don't want to spend money on that is just part of our regular funds. So, it gives us a little bit of wiggle room to try some new things.
...being prideful of your community for various reasons, and it goes back to being proud of the school system and the community where you are.
So, at your seats, there's information about this fund. It's on the flyer that has the information about our event, how you can contribute, and even a link to watch or share that video again with other people that you might know that might want to get involved. So, again, thank you for inviting us to share the positives this evening. We have a lot of great things that happen in this school district, and I'm really thrilled that part of my job is to celebrate them. So, unless you have any questions, we would love to present you with this check for $35,061.
Thank you, Ms. Kalmidge and Ms. Sabotnick, for that presentation, for the dedication to our teachers and staff, for the generous funds for all of those who participated in the events or behind-the-scenes running everything. Thank you very much. Do any of the other Board Members, any input, just thanks from all of us? Yes? Very good. Thank you so much. We appreciate your time tonight. All right, we're moving on. There are no recognition, employee recognitions this evening, but we are looking forward to hearing more of those later in the school year. Yes? Thank you. Our student representatives will begin presenting to us at our October meeting, so that'll give you something to look forward to next month. We are now at the point of our meeting where we give an opportunity for our citizens to speak. As in past practice, each individual will be limited to two to three minutes to speak in order to, for us to hear from our community, and then get on with the agenda of our meeting. You'll be given a two-and-a-half-minute... I'm so sorry. Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Raddi. I was just gonna ask if we could move to change the order of events of the meeting, because I would like to propose to pull the public comments policy ahead of the public comments tonight, so that we could operate under the new rules if the Board would so approve them.
Is that I...
I'm asking for an order of agenda change.
Order of agenda change? Can I go to for our policies on...
To move the consent agenda.
To switch it ahead?
Please.
Oh, you mean the policy that's in the consent agenda?
Yes.
Oh, you would...
I just like to move...
I'm confused about what was asked for here.
Just bump it up in the order of the meeting. That's the request.
Could I ask you again, what's your objective, is there?
I'd like to move to rearrange the agenda, so that we could address the consent agenda before public comments, please.
Is that your formal motion?
I'm moving that. Yes, please.
Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
All right, Mr. Montiel. Sue, would you please give the roll call to rearrange the order of our meeting this evening to move the consent agenda up?
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Amanda Raddi.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye.
Very good. We will be moving the consent agenda up, so we're going to put a hold on the citizens' speaking portion of the meeting, and we're going to jump down to our consent agenda. Please give me one moment as we move forward here. The beginning of our consent agenda has to do with public gifts. Mr. Clark, do we have public gifts this month?
Yeah, a few. Waukesha South High School received $5,000 from Jennifer and John Stillman, and $5,000 from Multiple Listing Services, Inc., both gifts to be used for the South football program. Waukesha West High School received steel tuning and pipe materials with an estimated value of $5,000 from Sandburn Tube Sales, Inc. These materials will be used for our metal fabrication classes. And higher elementary school received $5,000 from Wild Subaru of Waukesha. It's $500 for 10 classrooms via adopted classroom. These funds will be used for instructional resources and supplies.
Very good. Thank you to all those who donated to our schools and our students. Your consent agenda includes various categories for approval. If any Board Member wishes to have any of the items set aside for separate consideration, you will have that opportunity to do so now. There were no action items for expulsion panels, and the next piece in the consent agenda is the public comment at board meetings piece. Mr. Baumgart?
I'll just go back over that quickly.
Please.
At the previous board meeting, this came up, and there were some suggestions made or provided to us as things that we might want to revisit, which we did do at the last policy meeting in August. And you've all received a copy of the adjustments that were made, and therefore, it's in the consent agenda for approval.
Is... Okay. I'm just being...
Oh.
Make sure you're on.
Done.
Okay. Thank you. All right. There, let's see here. We have, this is an action item?
Well, the whole list is.
Yes, yes. Mr. Montiel, did I see your hand?
No, I'm sorry.
No? Okay. Okay. Excuse me. All right, Ms. Montiel, I got a little thrown off here. Excuse me. I'll catch back up. Mr. Montiel, would you please present the consent agenda?
Sure. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources and Compensation Committee approved of four resignations and 14 newer modified teacher contracts. The information was provided in your packet, and an addendum was placed at your desk. I'll move that the consent agenda be approved as presented and/or amended.
Very good. Is there a second to that?
A second.
Dr. Piasik, thank you. Any discussion? Saying none, Sue, would you please do the roll call vote?
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Amanda Raddi.
Aye. Past is 8-0. Thank you, everybody, for that.
If I could, please, Mr. Vice President. As we've passed the new public comments policy, I just would want to put on the floor that we would be operating under the new public comments policy.
Yes, it is. It is fully operational at this point. Yes. All right. Going back to the... If you're following along on our script, we're going to go back to Item G under General Business. I'll begin again here. We are now at the section of our meeting where there is an opportunity for citizens to speak. As been past practice, each individual will be limited two to three minutes' time to speak in order for us to hear from our community and then to get on with the meeting. You will receive a two-and-a-half-minute mark reminder, encourage you to wrap up your comments. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language in any manner, and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future Board of Education meetings. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speakers and of the Board of Education, and refrain from responding with any verbal comments, cheering, applause, or any other behavior that will detract from the meeting. Also, in order to respect the speakers and the meeting participants, please silence your phones at this time. Now, that being said, there are 32 speakers tonight, and we will allow for two minutes for each speaker. Mr. McCaffrey, at the two-and-a-half-minute mark, we'll give you notification that the time is coming.
Verify that.
One and a half. Two and a half is one we have... Excuse me. It is one and a half. Thank you for that clarification. Yes. I didn't read my own notes, so thank you for keeping me on task. All right. With that being said, our first speaker will be Mr. Paul Reese. On deck would be Sarai Monteray.
Good evening.
Mr. Reese.
I want to address you, Mr. McCaffrey. I usually find you one of the smartest men in this room. I talked to you before. I don't always agree with you, but I've always found your ducks to be in a row. I find you a well-thought-out individual. I don't find you someone who makes knee-jerk reactions to things until last month, until August 30th. It was disappointing, in a way, what you did, because I had so much respect. I didn't think you would cave to just... You had no new evidence when you changed your vote. You just caved to something on a whim, and I've never known you to do that. And I've found it disheartening in my time, in my 10 years of coming here, to see you finally do something like that. We talk in here a lot about critical thought and critical thinking and looking at examining even some evidence of things, and when you have a time period between 12:00 and 1:30 for people to come pick up their meals, their free meals, to help the poor, you leave out all the working poor. You forget about every family that is tied up that day. If it's nap time for some people's kids, what about that? So, you make an excuse that I want to feed, I don't want anyone to go hungry, to change a vote that you had reasonably made, and you had weighed out, and I don't think, like other people can play dumb in here, that you are one of those. I think you're a well-thought-out individual, and you cannot hide behind that. And it was very disheartening what happened. I mean, when I listen to people talk about this, I'm reminded of a John Lennon song, "I Me Me Mine." They just want. And I wanted to share that with you. I really have a great deal of respect for you, but that was very disheartening, what you did. You gave in to the whims of a lie. There was a lie against what was said and what was done here. So, anyways, I'd give you a few extra seconds. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Sarai Monteray, followed by Amy Menzel.
Good evening. Am I ready? This school year, I had the privilege of starting my 14th year of teaching in our school district and my 19th year of teaching overall. Recently, concerns have been raised across our country about critical race theory being taught in our schools. In my role as an English learner teacher, I have had the opportunity to co-teach and support many classrooms throughout my career. I have never witnessed critical race theory ever being taught to any student. Please do not confuse culturally relevant teaching with critical race theory. I do not have enough time to go into the differences between the two, but I really encourage you to please research it and look into it further. As a Latina who immigrated from El Salvador at the age of one, and being someone who has been called racist names and who has been told to go back to my country, and as a parent of a fourth grader and a third grader in our district, I worry about the direction that our district is currently headed in regards to equity in culturally relevant teaching. The reality is, we live in a diverse society. Utilizing culturally relevant practices and celebrating the richness of our diversity will benefit all students and help them be well-rounded individuals who will be prepared to work with people from all walks of life. I was at a district meeting this summer, and it was stated that this is the first kindergarten class ever that it is a minority-majority. Yet, as a district, we've taken down our equity statement, paused equity work, and are now removing welcoming signage? Unfortunately, we live in a world where those from some walks of life have not felt accepted. Some of you may think that having a poster is something trivial, and it doesn't make a difference, but you may be surprised to know that it actually does make a difference. If the purpose of a poster is to make students feel welcomed and safe, what is wrong with having that poster? If a poster that states this is an anti-racist classroom had to be taken down, what is the reasoning? What is the opposite? Would that be a racist classroom? Is that what we're really trying to protect? What message are we sending to students by asking that signs that are welcoming to all students be taken down? I ask that you please reevaluate the district's approach to equity and signage in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Menzel, to be followed by Monica Whaley.
Good evening. Once again, I thank you for the time to address you and remind you that I have emailed each of you previously, and I'm more than happy to continue discussions at your convenience. Please reach out if you'd like to discuss further. I hope you do. Tonight, I'd like to share a story with you. It starts as a story about me, 19-year-old me, who was a resident assistant at UW-Whitewater. I welcomed students on move-in day and was their designated go-to person when they locked themselves out, had a question, or just needed someone to talk to. As part of my training, we were provided Safe Space stickers to place on our dorm room doors, but I didn't put them up. It wasn't that I wasn't a safe space for my residents. I was adamant that I was, but I just figured that that was the default, right? We were resident assistants. It was our job to assist everyone. I didn't see a need to display a Safe Space sticker, so I didn't. I've since learned that such signage does make a difference to those it's intended to help. According to the Gay, Lesbian, and Straight Education Network, Safe Space stickers and posters help students identify school staff who are supportive. The research goes on to explain that students who had supportive staff by their side reported higher perceptions of safety and overall academic performance. 19-year-old me did not know this. I really did think that the world was a safe and welcoming place for all, and that's the thing. We don't see things as they are. We see things as we are. As a white, cisgender, heterosexual woman, the world is a relatively safe, welcoming place for me. I told you that this story starts with me, but it ends with us, all of us. We can learn from my mistakes 20-plus years ago. We can ensure that policies, procedures, and directives empower educators to support some of our students who need it the most. When you know better, you do better. We need to do better for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Monica Whaley, followed by Meg Whaley.
Good evening. Word: hypocrisy. Definition: The practice of claiming to have moral standards or beliefs to which one's own behavior does not conform. Example number one: complaining that the horrible people harassed you and your families, bullied you, and threatened you after your vote on free lunches. Imagine what our Black, Hispanic, Asian, East Indian, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and questioning students face throughout their years in our district. Example number two: hiring a new Black female Director of Equity and, three months later, putting a pause on her equity duties. This action comes after being praised for being open-minded, collaborative, embracing diversity by the people who hired you. Example number three: calling for balance by removing welcoming, affirming, and safe-zone signage in schools. There's never been balance when critically looking at racial disparities in programming, test results, performance outcomes, and expulsion rates. According to the Youth Risk Behavior Survey for our district, 47% of Hispanics, 45% of other students of color, and 59% of LGBTQ students feel like they don't belong in our school.
30 seconds.
46% of our LGBT students consider suicide compared to 13% of straight cisgender students. Example number four: focusing on current content for all students, knowing that learning takes place, no learning takes place unless the student feels safe. Maslow Before Blooms. I don't care about your religion, or your political party, or your economic status. I don't care about your religion, or your political party, or your economic status. Find your decency and compassion, and make our classrooms safe places. For some of our students, this is the only place where they feel safe.
Thank you, Ms. Whaley. Up next, Meg Whaley, followed by Greta Voight.
Hello. I first want to say that I'm so proud to see so many of my past torning students who are now at South here at the meeting tonight. This is my 25th year of being an educator in the public school system. I am a middle class, I am white, I am married to a woman I love. I am a daughter, a mother, a singer, a worship leader, and a racist. It is my 55th year of being a flawed human being who is far from perfect. When Black Lives Matters first came out, I thought to myself, yes, Black lives matters. All lives matter. I spoke with my minister about this, and this is what he told me. There is a house on fire in a neighborhood. The fire department arrives and begins spraying the house to put the fire out. Other homeowners in the area come out of their homes and ask, why aren't you spraying our houses? Don't our houses matter too? The firefighters reply, yes, your houses matter, but your homes aren't on fire. My 18-year-old nephew, Josh, committed suicide at college last year. He had good grades, he was well-liked. We still do not know why he did this. His life was on fire, and we did not realize it was burning. Maybe if he had a professor that he connected with, he wouldn't have killed himself. I think about this every day when I walk into my classroom. I pray that I can make a connection with the students who are in need. I pray that students will ask me, or some other trusted adult, for help when they need it. I have made many mistakes in my life, some as a teacher in this district.
30 seconds.
When I make a mistake, or do not handle a situation correctly, I admit I am wrong, apologize, and try to make reparations. Dr. Seibert, members of the Board, our Black students' lives are on fire, our Hispanic students' lives are on fire, our LGBTQ students are on fire. Do the right thing and allow our teachers to post in their classroom that they are a safe space, that all students are welcome, and that every human being has the right to be treated with dignity and respect. Thank you.
Goodbye. Greta Voight, to be followed by Melissa Bushman.
My name is Greta Voight. I'm a citizen of Waukesha, district educator, and a longtime Gay-Straight Alliance advisor. These last two weeks have been very painful and disappointing, as we were directed to take down these welcoming and inclusive Safe Zone signs and stickers that had been in my classroom for my entire 15-year teaching career. I understand the desire to remove political messaging, but these welcoming and inclusive signs have never been considered to be political in the past. In fact, this type of visibility is strongly recommended as a way to demonstrate support and acceptance for groups traditionally marginalized by our society. As word of this directive spread, I have received countless messages from my former students, who were struggling in high school and found comfort and support in these exact signs that you've required us to take down. So instead of hearing from me, I wanted to share a few quotes of former North students. One student said, "A decade later, I still recognize that sign and remember the comfort it brought me and so many of my peers." Another said, "These are the signs that got me through high school. It was a safe way to share that the LGBTQ+ community was supported and had a safe place to go. It's disappointing to see this change." Another said, "Those signs were such a comfort to me in high school. I knew I always had a place to go. This is unfair and makes zero sense." Another said, "I didn't know showing kids that you were supportive was so controversial. I feel like signs like these make classrooms so much more welcoming. It's a shame that people would consider things like this controversial. These signs don't do any harm to anyone." Another said, "When I was at North, it was great seeing the signs in your classroom and knowing it was a safe environment, there's nothing political about it." And yet another said, "I was very deep in the closet during my time at North."
30 seconds.
"I felt so safe and comfortable in your classroom, and it seriously is heartbreaking that this is happening in the school district. Signs like these save lives." As a community member and educator who works each day with a diverse and amazing group of students, I ask you to please reconsider this directive. I am not exaggerating when I say that our students' lives depend on it.
Voight. Melissa Bushman, followed by James Touchstone.
Good evening. What is the one thing we can all agree on in this room? It's wanting to educate our students. It's wanting to get up those test scores. It's wanting to have our students read at their grade level, right? Well, according to the School District of Waukesha students, the BIPOC students, the LGBTQ+ students, the Hispanic students, they don't feel like they belong, they don't feel safe. 46% of the LGBTQ+ students have considered suicide compared to only 13% of their hetero-cisgendered students. I'm sure you all have seen the awful, awful statistics, but administration still expects our students to perform under this duress. Now, I want to go back a couple of weeks to when our Board was being bullied by outsiders. I will state emphatically that I in no way condone bullying. I'm sure it was just awful. Dr. Piasik even motioned to table a vote because she felt, under the circumstances, she couldn't make a judgment on the decision. I don't blame her. It is not easy to work or learn under those circumstances. I'm not trying to downplay any of your situations. I just hope that you can see the correlation of your experience two weeks ago to what our BIPOC and LGBTQ students go through on a daily basis.
30 seconds.
My question is, how can we make these students feel safe and secure in order to foster their education? For children, feeling safe in school means increased academic success. With this knowledge, by allowing Safe Space signs and All-In-Welcome signs, it encourages educational achievements. The signs foster a positive learning environment, which in turn helps students learn. The administration's directive makes students feel unsafe. If the Board can't...
Thank you. Mr. Touchstone, is that correct?
Yes.
Followed by Maggie Steffen.
Hi, good evening. I'm here to speak. At the emergency board meeting, I was rather appalled that the school board didn't stand up for what was the right thing to do, but yet it allowed itself to be bullied at an emergency meeting, especially one member. I'm just especially disappointed in a board member who is more concerned about what their peers would whisper about them at work than doing the right thing. I'm disappointed that they didn't stand up to bullies against their fellow board members. I hope that they stand up better to bullies when it's student-on-student. I'm disappointed that they didn't lead by example for the rest of the state to follow, rather than bowing to the misguided news of reporting from the East Coast. I'm disappointed of a board member who made a speech about missing people who might need services due to a massive new socialism program, yet has to do anything of public substance to address his concerns. But I'm not going to complain without an action point. My action point would be for this member to find the courage of our forefathers, of the great civil rights leaders, to do the correct thing, and reverse the policy, and go back to truly helping people who need it. And send the message that Waukesha stands for helping people and not bending the knee for outside influences.
Thank you. Maggie Steffen, to be followed by Erica Konkowski. Please correct me if I mispronounce the names. Hi, welcome.
Hi. I was a former North Star student, and I was there when they first put up the Safe Space signs in the doors. And I remember how safe and how secure it made me feel. And I'm one of the lucky members of the LGBT. My family accepted me when I reached out to them and told them who I was. A lot of LGBT students don't get that luxury. They don't have that safety at home. They have to go home, and they have to keep a part of themselves inside and hidden from the people who are supposed to love them unconditionally. And of course, those signs aren't going to change that necessarily, but it gives them a place to stay safe when they're with you, in the school's care. And don't you think that those students deserve to feel safe when they're learning? A place where they can breathe and not have to worry about people judging who they are? I know, even me, when I had the support of my family, I still struggled with self-worth and caring for myself. And if I didn't have the support of my family, and knowing that there were people in the school system who cared, I don't know if I'd be here today.
30 seconds.
And all I can think is that there are students today in the schools who are in worse situations than I am, and I hope you think of them when you consider putting the signs back. Give them that small spark of hope that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. Erica Konowski, followed by Clint Wenninger.
I'm going to begin tonight with a letter I was asked to read to you, written by an 8th-grade student in our school district, Anex White. It's titled "Safety Within the Flag." The rainbow pride flag was made in 1978 by a gay man and drag queen, Gilbert Baker. Millions, including myself, have used this flag to show our pride. Recently, the school district has made it so that schools can't display pride flags or rainbows. I, a queer trans male, do not like this rule. If there were pride flags in school, queer students could be aware that the school supports the LGBTQIA+ community. They could be less fearful of discrimination and rejection. In my school, we have a gender-sexuality alliance. It has helped my peers and me feel a sense of belonging. Outside of GSI, I have only heard the LGBTQIA+ community spoken of in an ill way, or it is felt like the community is invisible. I believe that it would help a lot if we could display pride flags. In addition, there might be students who do not live in a supportive household and are in need of a safe place. Those students especially need a sign of hope and safety. In conclusion, schools should be free to show that they're a safe place for LGBTQIA+ students. Symbols like the pride flag and signs such as "anti-racist classroom" and "safe space" make historically marginalized students feel seen, feel accepted, feel safe, as indicated in Anex's letter. These symbols have the power to improve the mental health of our students, and as a result, make education more accessible. Why remove symbols of inclusivity, tolerance, acceptance, diversity, and safety? Who exactly are you trying to protect, appease, or possibly court by removing these symbols from our schools? What possible damage could they do? Why exactly are these signs considered political or controversial? Shouldn't a public school district, serving a multitude of students, encourage individuals across the political and religious spectrums to support LGBTQIA+ students to be anti-racist and to keep students safe? I've heard some argue that it is teachers, not signs, who have the power to make students feel welcome, acknowledged, and protected.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Clint Wenninger? Sorry, I hope I didn't slaughter that too badly.
No problem.
Followed by Melissa Temple.
My comments are going to be strange, because I'm publicing...public comments on the public comment policy, if that makes sense. Now, I'm too late for the public comment policy, because you guys voted on it. But I appreciate what the Board's been through, and I appreciate the policy going through. And I agree with about 99% of it, and it's unfortunate, sad that you had to go through that to do it. You know, I've been coming to numerous meetings over the last year and a half, and I think most people are respectful and considerate of not just you, but other people in the room, and that's really what you're driving at, and I appreciate that. The only issue I have is with the limitation of 30 minutes on there, and I know it gives the Board direction that you can vote on it, or to the Chair to change that. I think that should be unlimited. Whoever comes should have the ability to speak. This is the most basic level of government that we get to participate in, as citizens, and no matter what side of the aisle you're on, you should be allowed to voice your opinion if you're respectful and considerate. And sad that we had to, we saw part of it early in the meeting, that wasn't respectful and considerate. That took away from what Lynette Kalmage was trying to offer to the community. The only other thing I'd have to say to that is, you know, if you shorten the time, I think that's great, because, you know, if you don't want people to go on for five minutes, but adjust that accordingly, but please give everybody that comes to these meetings the opportunity to speak. Because I remember I was here, there was only two or three people, so I should get a whole bunch of time banked next time I want to come. So please consider that in the future, because this Board may change, people's attitudes may change, but the policy doesn't address that strong enough. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Melissa Temple, followed by Hillary Kennel.
My name is Melissa Temple, and I'm a National Board Certified Teacher at Higher Elementary School. As a person of color, signs that codify the Civil Rights Act of 1964 are a visual cue that the person behind them understands that I have faced discrimination and racism, and that they are my ally. The signs make me feel at ease. A 2019 article in the Journal of Pediatrics showed that school connectedness may have long-lasting protective effects across multiple health outcomes related to mental health, violence, sexual behavior, and substance use. Increasing both family and school connectedness during adolescence has the potential to promote overall health in adulthood. Knowing this, I do not agree with the recent directive from our superintendent to remove signs that say "anti-racist classroom," "safe spaces," and signs with rainbows that welcome all students. According to the most recent Youth Risk Behavior Survey done in all high schools in the District of Waukesha, 37% of high school students feel that bullying is a problem at their school. 38% of all high school students feel they don't belong at school. 47% of all high school students have experienced sexual or dating violence. 62% of high school students with a disability or chronic health issue were bullied at school. 39% of high school students of color were bullied at school. 59% of LGBTQ high school students felt they didn't belong at school. In 2019, when we were still allowed to post these signs...all those statistics are from 2019. At that time, in the District of Waukesha, 72% of all high school students felt they had at least one teacher that they could talk to. Straight, white, cisgender students will always feel welcome, because the majority of the staff in our district reflect their identities. When our marginalized students see that teachers specifically welcome them, they know that their teachers believe in our district's mission.
Thank you, Ms. Temple. Ms. Hillary Kennel, followed by Becky Gillian.
I'm a teacher in the district, and since I began teaching in Waukesha, every professional development opportunity that I've attended has stressed the importance of data-driven practices. Everything I implement in my classroom needs to be backed by data. I asked you guys tonight, where is the data now? To begin this school year, all staff received a message instructing us to remove all signs that include, but were not limited to, Black Lives Matter, Blue Lives Matter, Thin Blue Line, and "anti-racist classroom." The message said these signs would act as barriers for students. Where is the data backing this? Shortly after, the staff received messages about removing Safe Space signs and anything related to the LGBTQ community, such as pride flags and rainbow signage. Staff was once again told that these signs act as barriers for students. Where is the data to back this up? By removing these signs, not only do students feel isolated, but staff also feel isolated. Not only do our students possess a variety of identities, but so do our staff. The staff at SDW possess a wide range of identities that no longer are welcome in our classrooms. These actions that staff have been required to follow are making staff and students feel wrong simply for possessing an individual identity. I ask again, where is the data saying that advertising a classroom as inclusive is a barrier for student learning? Our district's policy states that we do not discriminate. Our district's mission statement says that diversity is a strength that we will respect and value. However, right now, I would disagree. These actions do not match the words. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kennel. Becky Gillian, excuse me, followed by Autumn Gilligan.
Hi. So here we are again. Many of you surely thinking that we will argue about everything and anything. So I'm not against removing politically divisive signage from schools, but signs prohibiting racism are not political, and signs declaring a classroom a safe space for LGBTQ teens are also not political. Despite how the middle-aged white speakers felt in August, stereotyping and discrimination is alive and well in Waukesha. Just have a conversation with any student of color or their parents. Students of color are not the only population that experience racism either. Asian-Americans, Sikhs, Muslims are just a small example of other groups that have seen rising violence against them. Seeing signs declaring that racism will not be tolerated sends a message, and taking down the signs sends the opposite message. A student's gender identity and/or sexual orientation is also not political. According to the CDC's data in 2019, 29% of transgender youth and 16% of gay lesbian youth reported being threatened with or injured with a weapon on school property compared with just 7% of cisgender or straight youth. 29% of transgender youth, 21% of gay lesbian youth, and 22% of bisexual youth had attempted suicide compared with, again, 7% of cisgender or straight youth. This is a good national statistics from 2019. These kids must know which adults to trust, and since many cannot... These kids must know which adults to trust and since many cannot turn to their parents. Knowing there is a safe spot at school with an adult they can turn to is very important. Removing signs sends the wrong message. Removing signs declaring schools a safe place for all, no matter their race, gender identity, sexual orientation, is wrong. It sends the message that as long as you are the same as everyone else, school will support you. If you think I'm overreacting, then you ought to spend some time in the schools talking with kids.
Thank you, Becky.
Yep.
Autumn.
All right, if you're nervous, you don't have to do it, okay? That's all right. Okay. Anytime. Go for it.
Hello, my name is Autumn Gilligan. I am in eighth grade at Horning. Friends who are members of the LGBTQ community, I want them to feel accepted. I hear people say the N-word and a slur on the bus sometimes already. When the signs are taken down, it will make kids feel like the school doesn't care as much about them. I think what people need to realize is...
That?
That minorities and members of the LGBTQ community, also students in this district and their existence, is not political.
Autumn.
Thank you.
Stacy Keen, followed by Rebecca Flatter.
Okay. I want to thank Dr. Seibert for making our schools a neutral environment with no political indoctrination. You should be commended for it. Ignore the Democratic Party, which rallied their base with an email regarding tonight. Once again, the Waukesha Democratic Party is involved, and I have the email they sent to prove it. I wish they put as much effort and money into fighting for good educational materials and student achievement as they did to providing free food to the wealthy and making sure our classrooms do not have divisive signs in them, or that they do have divisive signs.
Excuse me, one moment. We need the door open, please.
Stop my time, please?
Yes, yes. Nope, sorry, I just... We need to have the door open. Yes, thank you. Okay, you can resume her time.
Okay. All right. YOLO and later Gator were originally put in the hands of middle schoolers. They contain sexually explicit material, so explicit it was hard for most of you to hear them last month. I received the reviews which were used to make this decision. The reviews advise they are appropriate for high schoolers and above, and that they include stories of sexual experimentation, mature content, and graphic language. The opposite of innocent remains in the hands of middle schoolers. Reviews used to purchase this book also state it is appropriate for high school and above and contains sex. What person, based on the reviews used, thought this was acceptable to put in the hands of our young children? They made a conscious decision to go against age appropriateness and give it to 11-year-olds. Thank you to Rachel Herman for her hard work in implementing an option for library checkout notifications. However, the district's communication made no mention to parents of why they might want to opt in. Maybe more parents would opt in if you actually told them this new feature was implemented because you've placed pornographic material at their children's fingertips. Do you think it is your job to enlighten little kids to the world of sex? Where along the lines did you decide our children should be hypersexualized? What in the world is wrong with you people? Concentrate on educating our children and stop getting involved in their sex lives.
Rebecca, to be followed by David Wadd.
Hi. Last, may I stood here and provided evidence that CRT was being taught in our classrooms. And I thank you and administration for swiftly acting to address this issue. However, you aren't done. CRT materials are still in our libraries at all level. In 2020, this picture book, Not My Idea, a book about whiteness, was put into our Banting Elementary School library and available to children as young as four years old. This book explicitly states that the color of your skin matters and affects all of your experiences, including which neighborhoods you can live in. The book says that racism is a white person's problem and teaches that your own family may think they are the good ones, but they are not. The conversation in this book between a young child and her mother teaches a child how to challenge their parents because adults lie to their children. The book says, "White supremacy has been lying to our kids for centuries, and whiteness is a bad deal." The book also shows that if you are white, you are making a contract with the devil, and this contract gets you stolen land, stolen riches, special favors, and the right to mess endlessly with the lives of your friends, neighbors, loved ones, and all fellow humans of color for the purpose of profit. The last page of this book for our children says, "Innocence is overrated." This is clearly racial discrimination against white people. Why do we have books in our elementary schools teaching children to mistrust parents, mistrust police, and to be ashamed of their skin color? This book was vetted and approved by our Banting librarian. The classifications she used, or the book that were provided, were prejudices and white race identity. The reviews praised this book, calling it "A call to action for white children, a necessary book about whiteness, white supremacy, and resistance." There was not one conservative review of this book. The book vetting system is broken. Some of our librarians are clearly going rogue, and these reputable reviewers we pay for are clearly one-sided.
Thank you. Next is David Wadd, to be followed by Elizabeth, excuse me, Cass Caciato.
Good evening. A month ago, parents came here to read aloud passages from books available in our libraries that were so sexually graphic that the president of this body tried to prevent them from being spoken here. People who saw this were disgusted. They couldn't believe this material was available in our libraries and could be accessed without parental consent or notification. Presumably, this board and our administrators felt the same way because commitments were made to fix this. After watching the administration presentation on where we are a month later, and most of the TNL committee members' participation in response to it, I can only conclude that this district and the vast majority of members of that committee are more concerned about cheerleading for how great this district is, glossing the problem over, and trying to move on than they are with actually fixing it. I don't have time to call out all the numerous examples of the lack of transparency, accountability, and intellectual curiosity about the root causes of this problem and/or the solutions to fix them. Sadly, many of you here are just politicians and bureaucrats. You show more concern for appeasing political interests, protecting reputations, avoiding issues you fear may cast this district in a negative light than offering transparency, asking tough questions of those, the district employees, and setting expectations of them that will lead to substantial and rapid solutions to the depraved problem of sexually explicit material being made available to our students. Parents like me come and thunder at you every month because what we care about are our kids, all of them in this district. Until you stop betraying our trust, glossing over problems, and putting your political and bureaucratic and political concerns on the back burner to start making children's safety and academic achievement your first priority, the storm will continue.
All right, next we have Elizabeth Caciato. Forgive me if I've mispronounced, to be followed by Dave Richmond.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Caciato, and I'm a graduate of Waukesha North High School, class of 2015, after growing up in the Waukesha School District from K-5 to 12. I came here today because I wanted to make it known how absolutely shameful I think it is that the District of Waukesha is okay with effectively silencing your marginalized students. While I'll agree that signs affiliated with an express candidate or political party do not have a place in the classroom, acknowledging the existence of marginalized students such as LGBTQ identifying is not a political statement. The signs that I saw demanded be taken down, did not condone a party or affiliation. But a simple affirmation of everyone is welcome here, ensures a productive and safe learning environment for all, and creates the expectation of respect that every student should be entitled to. Removing these signs is also a disservice to all students. A large part of high school is preparing students to go out into the world, the real world, where they will encounter people different from them. No political belief or affiliation a student may have will change the simple fact that gay people exist, that transgender and non-binary people exist, that people with different home environments, people who speak different languages, and people with different backgrounds than theirs exist. And those signs mattered to me as someone who grew comfortable in my identity during my time at North. When your students who identify as LGBTQ contemplate suicide at three and a half times the rate as straight students, the solution is not to make them feel even more outcast in a place that they must be every day. Each respect. Thank you.
Dave Richmond, to be followed by Marilyn Granger.
I had a whole list of notes that I was going to go through, but I'm going to start with the words that I wrote down here once I came in today. A lot of people are talking about a lot of key issues. This board and the superintendent are tone deaf. Absolutely, utterly tone deaf. June's meeting, which everyone claimed was a wonderful meeting, you can watch on YouTube, it was basically a nice little discussion and how wonderful we are. You, as a board, as an administration, need to listen and understand. It is no longer acceptable answer to be, "Well, that's the way we used to do it." One-third, one-third, I tell you, of the students in this district qualified for free meals, and we spent the majority of the time talking about the top 10%. That is shameful. The little thing that you focused in on missed the entire message. And the bullying that was here... There are public actions that do create reactions. That was an overreaction, agreed. But this board needs to look themselves in the mirror and go through. Remember always that the first and greatest concern must be for the educational welfare of the students attending the public schools. And the tone deafness of having signs taken down politically is incorrect. Totally incorrect. You should put in your resignation, you've had more than three strikes, it's time for you to go. You're not a fit for this district, and what you tried to pull with this little letter so you didn't get targeted last week was uncalled for. Is that 30 seconds or my time? Okay, thank you. If you don't hear me, I'll be out in the hall. You can come chat with me later or feel free to contact me. But every single one of you in this room need to look in the mirror. I paused to ask for questions. You need to look in the mirror and understand...
We will. Thank you. Appreciate you coming to us. Marilyn Granger, followed by Isabella Arnt.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I spoke in front of the Finance Committee on Monday night about the same issue. Back in June, when the board voted to stop the extra feeding of students that didn't really need it, I thought that was a great decision, and the board must have thought it was too, and I'm sure they put a lot of effort into looking into it before they made their vote. Nine to zero, you all agreed. And then someone decides to call an emergency meeting because... Someone on the board. Because from the moment you passed that bill in June, the protestors started, and they started threatening you and calling your home and coming to your place of employment. They were ugly, there's no doubt about it. A bully is ugly. And sad to say it, the worst thing I can do is give in to a bully. It makes a bully stronger next time. If you think by appeasing the bullies that they won't come next time when they disagree with something you did, you're very, very wrong, because they will, and they will be even stronger than they were this time.
30 seconds.
I think it would be appropriate to call another emergency meeting and maybe rethink this vote, because there is no child that's going to be left behind. That was discussed in the Finance Committee. There are many ways to find out which kids need help besides the parents filling out the forms, social workers, teachers. There's a lot of different ways.
Thank you, Ms. Granger. Up next is Isabella Arnt, followed by Maya Minor. Yes, go ahead.
I, along with many other people, are not happy with the school board and their decision to remove pride flags, Safe Space, Anti-Racist, and BLM posters from school classrooms. I'm going to try to give you guys the benefit of the doubt and say that you don't know how what you're doing is affecting your students. I guess I want to first tell you about how having pride flags in the classrooms made me feel. Coming to West freshman year and seeing pride flags in all of my classes made me feel like I was safe and accepted at school. They made me feel like there was an altercation with a student, I could talk to any teacher, and they could protect me, and they'd have my support. They made me feel like even though there are peers that think I'm weird or wrong for being gay, that at least I wasn't alone. The pride flags made me feel proud for who I am, and it's not anything I have to hide. Last year, I was elated when the Anti-Racist posters were put up. Obviously, I'm not a student of color, but I can only assume that the students of color felt something similar to what I felt with the pride flags. I was glad that the school was trying to make everyone feel safe and loved and wanted them to know that the school has their backs. This year was when I really realized how everything made me feel. Right away, I noticed that the comfort of the pride flags were gone. Seeing that the pride flags and various posters are taken down make me feel like the school doesn't care about me and many others like me. Thankfully, I've been at this school for two years, and I know who my safe teachers are, and I know who I can go to in a time of need. How do you think that LGBTQ freshmen coming to this school feel?
30 seconds.
Put yourself in your shoes for just a second. I'm sure they feel scared, they're in a new environment. I don't feel comfortable in my classes, and I'm sure they don't either. I'm sure it's scary feeling like they don't have teachers to protect them. I'm more than disappointed with this school board. How do you claim... Your claim to get rid of these is because it's too political? A pride flag is too political? Is me being gay too political? Honestly, I feel like by saying that a pride flag is too political for school, you are saying that by having gay students, it's too political to have in your school.
Thank you, Ms. Arnt.
What's the difference between a pride flag and a gay student?
Maya Minor, followed by Kaylee Williams. Maya?
Hi, I'm Maya. I'm a junior at West. If anyone gets offended by human rights, they're the problem. When someone is offended by a rainbow, does that not raise any red flags? Or maybe they're the issue, not the flags? Is being LGBTQ political? Can you justify human rights being considered a controversial political stance and still feel in your heart that you're a good person? I was new to Wisconsin when I was a freshman. I was scared not only to start a new high school, but to meet completely new people. I remember coming into the counselor's office to get all my things in order, and I was just a wreck. I didn't want to come to school and all the things. One of the things that helped me calm down was seeing the Safe Space signs. And I started to feel more excited about the school and new opportunities and classes. The Safe Space signs, pride flags, anti-racism signs, all the positive and accepting and hopeful signs we had are gone now, and I can't hope to start to feel the same way again. Sorry. LGBTQ... Sorry. LGBTQ youth come from rejecting families are more than eight times more likely to attempt suicide. Each time, an LGBTQ harassment or abuse, whether it be physical or verbal, increases their likelihood of self-harm by 250%. Only 18% of LGBTQ youth are taught positive representation in schools with inclusive curriculum. Students report that nearly 80% of students are more accepting of LGBTQ youth rather than the baseline to... than the baseline 35% when they have more of the representation. Students with depression report having their GPA drop over half a point with a pattern of increasing interference in, in school and motivation, and grades decreasing. School-based bullying prevention.
Thank you, Maya. Up next is Kaylee Williams, followed by Molly Burke.
My name is Kaylee Williams, I'm a junior at Waukesha West. Of the 17 years I've been alive, all of them, I have known I was black. My mom is white, my dad is black. Of those 17 years, 14 of which I have had an amazing sister. She has Down Syndrome, she is also a minority, she is half-black as I am. And of those 17 years, five of which I've known I was queer. I have always understood that people are different, people come from different backgrounds, and people are more than just what you see. To say that seeing pride flags or seeing Black Lives Matter posters is not symbolic is ignorant. Saying that taking them down implies a safe space for the entire district is ignorant, because in reality, the school district is not a safe place automatically. We do not teach tolerance correctly to students. I had anti-bullying presentations when I was five, six, seven, maybe, haven't had one since. If you are going to tell me that I'm aware, that every student is automatically aware of the struggles every person goes through, you are ignorant. I am one of the very few queer people of color that are aware, that are lucky enough to have a supportive family, to have an understanding family. Having the pride flags up in my classroom-
Seconds.
...provides a safe space for me, and it provides a safe space that I know my sister could potentially come to. Without those posters up, I do not feel safe at school all the time. People I see on a daily basis are judging me solely for the way I look, solely for the way I behave. They do not know the things I have gone through, and I do not know the things that they have gone through. Unless you teach proper tolerance, things will never get better. That's why I ask you keep your visual representations of pride-
Time.
...and anti-racism up.
Thank you, Kaylee. Thank you very much. Molly Burke, followed by Chuck Harrison.
Haven't spoken here in a long time. Last time I spoke, my daughter, who's disabled, I was advocating for her, and that didn't turn out very well. Lot of progress, very little progress was made to help my daughter in her world, as well as the LGBTQ, different color, all these different, people that are poor, can't afford lunch, people that just don't have food. These are issues that are community issues, and I don't quite understand why these big decisions are being made that create a lot of conflict without actually talking to the community themselves. I want to know, were the kids and the clubs and the leaders of the LGBTQ A-plus community consulted on how they feel the signs and the removal of the signs make them feel? Did they say that if they were in a classroom where the teacher didn't have a pride flag, they didn't feel safe? That would be a good reason to, you know, consider that. It's the same thing with the lunches. I heard this amazing spot on ESPN Sports Radio, and it was probably a couple minutes of different kids talking about why this new lunch program's so important. It was spoken, it was spoken by kids that are affected with it. It was spoken by kids maybe that don't fall into that category. And my, my, my call out to everyone in this community, not just the school board, is, let's stop the bullying, let's take the new word and put it all over our schools, our classrooms, our fieldhouses, our auditoriums, our cafeterias, and that word is inclusive. Inclusivity is what we need to be striving for, not divisive conflict. We believe and agree on more than we disagree on. Thank you.
Chuck Harrison, followed by Kevin Condon, excuse me.
When I see something saying that I'm welcome or accepted, I feel welcome or accepted. This district has a nondiscrimination policy stating that regardless of sex, age, race, color, national origin, ancestry, creed, pregnancy, marital or parental status, sexual orientation, physical, mental, emotional, or learning disability, it's nondiscrimination. I'm a freshman this year, and throughout my entire career as a student in this district, I've felt safe, respected, and accepted in schools. When I heard that a new policy was passed essentially banning political signage, including but not limited to, safe space signage, all are welcome signage, and anti-racist signage, I immediately felt alone, isolated, and worried about what the future would hold for my school district. As I looked into it, I found myself asking why? Why would a superintendent pass a policy that forbids welcoming, accepting, and overall kind messages? Why has being safe in schools become political? And why were only teachers notified about this through an email? I have no answers to these questions, and I cannot logically think of any answers myself. Now I come to you with a question. Will you help me feel comfortable, safe, and accepted in my school?
30 seconds.
Or will you add to the existing pressure and stress of being a queer high schooler? Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Kevin Condon, followed by Samuel D'Amico.
Good evening, I'm Kevin Condon, I'm from, a new member of the community, so this is very new to me. I worked 20 years in Chicago Public Schools, where diversity was everywhere, and I think the safety of the kids was always first and foremost, and I believe that is your concern here. I'm really impressed with the involvement tonight. I've been to many school board meetings in Chicago, and I have not seen this much involvement, particularly from the students who've been here tonight. My concern is about safety, as well as theirs, but mine's about the CDC guidelines and mitigation processes that have been put on the table for this school year, as written in your communications. I have three kids, one of them is a year old, they ride the bus to and from school, they're not, not the one-year-old. The seven and five-year-olds ride the bus to and from school, and I'm always a little disappointed when I see the lack of masks on the bus, because I want my kids to be safe. It seems that we're not that far away from the vaccine, we can't predict the future for kids under 12. But in the states where they're not using CDC guidelines, they're seeing uptick, a huge surge in Texas and Florida. Texas has the anonymity, or the infamy of being the leading state for children deaths. And 59 kids have died in that state, and that number has grown since they stopped using mitigation strategies. I implore you to simply make kids wear masks. You can do it, it's within your power to do that. Staff particularly should all be wearing masks.
30 seconds.
Because the kids look at their teachers, the people in the building, as role models. And when I know from observation that teachers are not wearing their masks, and other staff members PTO, persons sitting in the hallway, you know, that shows that the kids don't have to wear them. My kids, I want them to. And I think there's a need for you to make that a policy again, so that everybody in the school is safe, similar to the concerns these people have today, my concerns about the safety of our students.
Thank you, Ms. Condon, Mr. Condon. Samuel D'Amico, followed by Reed Miller.
My name is Samuel D'Amico, I'm a ninth grader at Waukesha South High School. The school district of Waukesha says it is committed to providing an equal educational opportunity for all students in the district. They even say, "The school district of Waukesha does not discriminate in its admissions, programs, activities, services, or employment on the basis of sex, age, race, color, national origin, ancestry, creed, pregnancy, marital or parental status, sexual orientation, physical, mental, emotional, or learning disability, or any other reason prohibited by state or federal laws or regulations." So why does the superintendent's policy contradict what the board and district policies are? If the message is, and the mission is, and the reality is, that the school district of Waukesha does not discriminate, then why can't we emphasize and display and actualize those expectations? Why can't we display what our policies are? We have a zero-tolerance hate policy. We have a diverse and respectful school district. Why can't our posters reflect our district's rules? Why? We have never been told why. We have been told why these posters were taken down, but we have never heard the justification of why these concerns of taking these posters down have been ignored. Because they have been ignored, we have been ignored. It's one of the main reasons why I organized this tonight. I'm here to stand in opposition to the superintendent-
30 seconds.
...making a decision to not allow schools to hang posters to display what our expectations of tolerance and respect are. I'm here to stand with the school district of Waukesha Community, the third most diverse county in the state, in supporting these posters in our school. That's what freedom of speech is, and I'm here to support the freedom of speech in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Reed Miller, followed by Joey Jacobs.
Last September, I came to Waukesha South. We are a diverse school, as I'm sure you all know, with a minority enrollment well over 50%. On my first day of school, I noticed something in the back of my chemistry room which made me just a little bit more proud of the school I was attending. A small sign that read, "This room is a safe place for LGBT+ students at Waukesha South." And I thought to myself, "That's great." Thinking of all the LGBT friends I had at the school, whose orientation made the experience of transferring schools a little more scary and far more confusing than mine was. They wanted to know which teachers they could trust. And as time went on throughout the day, I noticed more and more signs around the school in my classes. I had heard from my LGBT friends about the maltreatment that they'd receive from other students because of who they are. But today, the maltreatment is coming from a letter by the superintendent, which claims that these signs must come down because they are too political for our schools. Being who you are is not political. Tolerance is not political. Please allow the signs to stay up in the rooms of teachers who wish to have them. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Joey Jacobs, followed by Bill Jacobs.
I can't say anything better than anybody else, or than everybody else has before me. So I came to read a death certificate, not death certificate, memorial of a woman that died of COVID. It says, "Candace K. Kruger airs 66," of Springfield, passed away on September 3, 2021, at St. John's Hospital in Springfield, Illinois. She was preceded in death by more than 4,531,799 others infected with COVID-19. She was vaccinated, but was, but was infected by others who chose not to be. The cost was her life. Family went on to say, "This all could have been avoided. This could have been prevented by a few acts of kindness." They were in a state that had the lowest, that had one of the lowest vaccination rates in the country. Getting a vaccine and wearing a mask for others, had this done, had this been done, she would be here today. Shame on the district for throwing out all mitigation. Shame on you guys for doing everything. I know it wasn't the board, Dr. Seibert.
30 seconds.
Shame on you for, for the signs. There's no good reason for that. There's no good reason for getting rid of mitigation, because people are dying. You have blood on your hands.
Thank you. Bill Jacobs, followed by Mike Walsh.
Hi, good evening, I'm Bill Jacobs. I live in Waukesha, I have three children in the district. I want to say bullying is wrong and should not be tolerated, whether it's school board members being bullied, or school children being bullied. I want to talk about the removal of signs whose purpose is to support our diverse children. There are a lot of signs, so I'll focus on one sign, the safe zone signs. Why would anyone oppose giving our children a safe zone? As adults, we have our own safe zones. We want to be safe in our homes, our churches, our support groups. Adults can talk about their feelings with their spouse, their priest, their bartender. Well, some kids don't have anyone that they can talk to. A safe zone sign is a symbol, and it simply shows that they have someone that they can talk to, they have somewhere they can go, to a place where bullying is not tolerated. We all want to be safe, we all want people we can talk to. What does it tell our children when we remove a sign, a symbol that supports them and their safety? Why would anyone want to deny our children the right to feel safe? Thank you.
Mike Walsh.
Hi, everyone. So, coming up later tonight, actually, has changed everything that's kind of gone in my mind a little bit. So we saw the signs behind, over here before, that said, "Teach truth," and I'm going to teach you my truth. And having government-sanctioned pornography in the schools is a terrible idea. And you know, you listen to statistics of these kids that are suicidal, and you know what? Could that be part of it? Could we be messing with these kids' minds at 11 years old? Could we be infiltrating their minds at 11 and 12 years old? Okay? Why don't we play them some, some, some rap music? Okay? Why don't we, why don't we bring them some gangster rap at 11 years old? Okay? Let's, let's get that in the schools, if it's okay. You know, if the parents are, are actually saying, "Hey, you know what, they're going to see it anyway," and I've heard that excuse, "They're going to see it anyway." You know what, they're going to see hookers and blow, too. Should we put that in the cafeteria? You know, have the kids get that? They're going to see it. It's the same asinine thing. You know what, I've seen a lot of signs, and you know, signs don't mean anything, you know, it's a shame. And we failed our kids, we failed our kids if the signs are what's saving them, right? The statistics that they're saying are saying that the suicide rates are high, that was before, that was before, the signs were already there. So that means that maybe we should fire the teachers and hire marketing companies. Okay? Because that's obviously what's going to save them. And I feel bad for these kids that feel marginalized. If you feel marginalized as a kid, what you should do right now is stand up and say, "Enough! Enough with the BS of telling me I'm something else."
30 seconds.
"I'm not marginalized, I'm a human being, quit teaching me that I'm different, that I'm less than." Okay? And I'll tell you what, for bullying, there's bullying in schools, and there's bullying online. I want every kid, every kid, to go into your parents' social media accounts and say, "Mom and Dad, let me look at what you post online, let me see what you do." Because you don't want me to be bullied, but you are bullies. I'm talking about the parents, not the school board. There is bullying out there in these Facebook groups, and it's disgusting, it's got to stop.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we have gone through everyone who has signed up. Thank you so very much for taking your time. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the board? Coronado?
I just, oh, did you say anybody else to-
We have, Ms. Coronado has stepped up. Thank you.
Good evening. I stand here before God, the public, and before you, the Board of Education, and humbly and respectfully use my First Amendment right afforded to me by the Constitution of the United States, of which I have been sworn under oath to uphold when I was appointed by the governor of Wisconsin, to serve our state as a parent with lived experience. Under the First Amendment, the Cornell Law School, there's a quote in there, it says, "prohibits citizens from petitioning for government duress of grievances." What that means is, "We have the right to make complaint to, to seek the assistance of one's government without fear of punishment or reprisal." Also, I have the Dear Colleague Letter from the Secretary of Civil Rights, Seth M. Gattler. I'm a concerned parent, as a member of the public, as a Waukesha taxpayer, an active citizen who votes in Waukesha County, as a parent raising children with disabilities that attend Waukesha School District. And lastly, as an advocate, I urge you to seek the truth, that you are fully informed, and that you will remain curious, not furious, and not cause further harm to students and families. At last, my friend Angela Perry, who was a mom who was struggling to navigate special education services, and her life was affected by domestic violence. As you may know, I supported her, her children, however, her body could not withstand the overwhelming amount of toxic stress. She left us way too soon.
30 seconds.
To be frank, I watched and witnessed what is transpiring at the Waukesha Sem- To be frank, I watched and witnessed what is transpiring at the Waukesha Sem Governance Board, Waukesha Board of Education, and inside our family courtrooms. I'm absolutely sick to my stomach over what is being done with the Valdez case and especially powerless over what Ethan Valdez and his siblings are being subject to in this, as students and as young adults. When the truth shines, we need to be holding you accountable.
Thank you, Ms. Coronado. Please fill out the form with Sue. Okay, thank you. Yes. Yeah, go ahead and speak and then fill out the form so we have it on record, please.
Good evening. I didn't come here planning to speak, if you can't tell by my lack of paper, because I do like to write things up and be prepared for class. I'm a teacher of the district. I've taught here for 10 years, and I teach art at Waukesha West. Teachers are getting such a bad rap lately. Teachers should be fired. We have worked our tails off. I know we've lost so many people this year. I came straight from work tonight. I had club after school, and club consisted of students having fun, enjoying themselves, not caring about the fact that they were there after hours. We are there to support our kids. Not all of our kids feel welcome in every classroom. I have heard that, and it's hard to hear that. The signs that we have have helped those students feel welcomed. And I know, we say, well, we should just assume all spaces are safe. Drive down the road, speed limit signs are there to help negotiate speeds. If we took them away, would we just assume what speed that road is? We have posters up in the classroom to help us navigate learning. Do we take those down because we assume students know that? No. This is just confirming, the usage of signs is just confirming that we love all of our students, regardless of the background. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for taking the time to address us. We are going to move on to minute approval. We have minutes from August 11, 2021, the regular board meeting, August 19, 2021, special meeting, executive session, and August 30, 2021, special board meeting. Do we have a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Mr. McCaffrey, thank you. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Mr. Montiel, thank you. Any discussion regarding these minutes? Seeing none, Sue, would you please give the roll call? Anthony Zanobia?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye.
Corey Montiel?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Amanda Roddy?
Aye. Thank you, Sue. That passes eight-zero. Moving on to the Communication and WF Report. Dr. Seibert, any communications to share?
We do not, Mrs. Roddy.
Thank you very much. Mr. Pontio, is there a WEF, I don't know where the A came from, WEF update?
There is not. It was done by Ms. Kelmidge at the voting this morning, this afternoon.
Wonderful. Yes, thank you. That was a fantastic presentation. We appreciate it. Thank you. To the School Charter Program Report, Mr. Baumgart.
Yes, I do have a report. Received this very recently from Maria Di Matto over at South regarding the Engineering Academy and the Health Academy. The Engineering and Health Academies have been recognized as a Project Lead the Way distinguished school. This recognition shows our commitment to helping students own their education by increasing student access, engagement, and achievement. We are one of 204 Project Lead the Way high school programs across the country to receive this recognition. Second item, still on the OIPA and the BHP, 36 of our engineering seniors passed the, and I'm not sure what this is, the Autodesk Inventor Certification and Qualified for the Technical Incentive Grants. This provides monies to our academies for capital improvements. And the third item, last year's seniors in engineering design and development and biomedical innovations created incredible projects. From a safety scrunchie to a boat ramp, students were amazing problem solvers and reading to conquer the world, ready to conquer the world, excuse me. I mentioned this at the end of the last school year in June. I don't know if you took me up on visiting that program when it was in place. If not, it was a loss that you missed on it. Very, very positive programs. There are some great slide shows about these successes. I'm going to contact Maria and have them sent to everybody through the email. It's simple. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll look forward to seeing those in our emails. Next on the agenda is the CISA One Report. That will be postponed until October, so be looking out for that. Bypass the consent agenda that was already taken care of, straight on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Seibert.
Thank you, Mrs. Roddy. In the interest of time, I have nothing to report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We're now going to the section of our meeting that deals with the individual committees. The first committee that we'll be reporting tonight will be the Government Relations Committee. Ms. Reinacek.
Thank you, Ms. Roddy. We did not meet this month, but we do have a meeting coming up on September 29, and we'll have a report after that. It is going to be at 9:00.
I am on the 29th. Thank you very much. Next up is the Human Resource and Compensation Committee, tonight presented by Mr. Montiel.
Thank you. We had our meeting earlier this morning, I'm sorry, earlier this evening. We had one action item and no discussion items. The action item was that the administration is recommending Christopher Carabon for the position of Assistant Principal of Les Paul Middle School. Mr. Carabon values building relationships with students and staff. He brings a skill set and knowledge of instruction, leadership, data analysis, school improvement processes, management, and school system structures. Christopher has been referred to by his supervisor as "an agent of change for good." His strong work ethic and knowledge of behavior management, PBIS, and understanding of the power of collaboration and connection will be an asset to our middle school team. Mr. Christopher Carabon comes to us with over four years of experience as an assistant principal in MPS. He was an assistant principal at the Lincoln Center of the Arts for over three years before transferring to Rufus King International High School. Prior to his administrative experience, Christopher is a special education teacher. Christopher has a master's degree in administration and supervision from National Lewis University, a teacher certification from Lakeland College, and a BA in communications from UW-Milwaukee. Christopher Carabon's resume and contract were provided to the board. Salary and benefits will be according to the minimal middle management policies. Madam Vice President, I move to approve the recommendation and contract of Christopher Carabon for the position of Assistant Principal of Les Paul Middle School.
Seconded.
Mr. Baumgart, seconded. Thank you very much. Any discussion on this thing? Yes, Mr. Baumgart.
Just report what I mentioned last month in case you forgot or weren't paying attention anyway. But I did meet Christopher when I was over at Les Paul one morning, and it's the kind of person that just made an immediate impact on you, on me, because of his ability to socially meet me, get in conversations with me, share his thoughts and ideas, all within a few minutes of time. Very, very convincing young man, and enthused to see him there.
Very good. Thank you for sharing that. Mr. Montiel.
Thank you. I haven't had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Carabon yet, but I have heard, as I heard from Mr. Baumgart tonight, wonderful things. We're expecting a lot of him, because I think he is an individual, like many of our other instructors and principals, that are just great. So we're happy to have him and looking forward to him doing well.
Yes. All right, Sue, if you would please give the roll call. Kelly Piasik?
Aye.
Corey Montiel?
Aye.
Anthony Zanobia?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy? Aye. Thank you. Passes eight-zero. Congratulations, and we're looking forward to seeing the great work he's going to help us do. Next, we're going to move on to the Policy Committee, presented by Mr. Baumgart.
Okay, thank you. The Policy Committee, an action item existed before in the consent agenda this evening for Policy 0167.3, Public Comment at Board Meetings, that was approved and will be instituted. Beyond that action item, we did have, at our committee meeting, we did have a discussion on Policy 2240, Controversial Issues in the Classroom. The committee discussed controversial, this is a tongue twister here, issues in the classroom. The policy specifically states that, quote, "The board will permit the introduction and proper educational use of controversial issues, provided that their use in the instructional program does not indoctrinate or persuade students to a particular point of view," end of quote. Rather, "The consideration of such issues can help students identify important issues and explore all sides of an issue." Administration has reviewed this policy with staff and emphasized the importance of following this policy. Staff will maintain a balance between facilitating open discussion to help students to think critically, while at the same time avoiding indoctrination. Administration does intervene with topics when topics aren't handled appropriately. Balance is a key. Continued guidance of this topic will be forthcoming for the staff. And that concludes that report. Oh, is it a discussion?
I was going to say, yes, it is a discussion item. Any board members care to? All right. Man, yes, Mr. Zanobia.
I originally had brought this to the board's attention, this policy, on controversial issues. And when I did that in a policy committee meeting, I did so because it does address in the policy the issue of the indoctrination or persuasion of students to a particular point of view. And I brought up signs as an example of that in schools. And it was not at my request, but administration did put out a statement asking for balance and for those signs to come down. I support that. I believe that these signs are one of many things. I don't think it goes far enough. I think there's indoctrination, persuasion of points of view in our books and our curriculum and our lesson plans. And I came to this board with the notion that politics does not belong in schools to the extent that we now see it in schools. We are politicizing everything. And how do our students learn anything in an environment where every issue is politicized? And that's very unfortunate. Someone said tonight that they can't enter a school because it is by definition an unsafe space. If that is the view of our students walking into our schools, I feel hopeless that our schools are broken and maybe unfixable, because a statement like that says our students can't operate and learn in an environment. I don't have the, I don't want to put administration on the spot, but if I am walking into a meeting tonight and I hear so many students say that bullying is an issue at this level, that so many of them feel unsafe to go to school, what in the world is going on? Are these, is this really happening in our schools? And not just from one perspective, from all perspectives. I'm sure we could get speakers in here to say the exact opposite of what we heard. I'm sure we could get students to say the exact opposite of what they said. So there's always two sides to the story. I do not see the purpose in minimizing students into segments and segregations and groups to where they feel isolated. And I believe there's a mental health crisis in our country, in our school districts at every level. We've just gone through 18 months of some of the worst psychological fear that most of us have ever experienced, and our kids have had to endure that. So mental health being a crisis before, it certainly is now. And I addressed that in a Facebook post months ago. An article came out.
What's my order? We're really dealing with?
An article came out, excuse me, Mr. Baumgart, I won't be long. I really, I really won't. An article came out in this magazine, I believe it's Wasby School News, about children's mental health during the pandemic. Being the cesspool that Facebook and Twitter are, I was mocked and ridiculed for bringing up mental health as a issue related to masks and isolation of quarantines and so on and so forth. That wasn't my intent at all. It was simply to say, as a board, this is an issue that's going on in our schools. We best be alerted to it and pay attention to it. And tonight, I hear the same is true on the other side of the aisle, of mental health issues. And I don't believe anyone on this board would for one second say that not every kid in this school district matters, regardless of who they are, how they identify. You know, these are our neighbors, and we need to look at individuals in that fashion. I am more than disheartened tonight at what I've heard. I fully support an apolitical environment for our schools, be it signs, be it classroom materials, be it everything. This policy exists to try to make that happen. That was my issue for bringing it up. I've been told I'm too political and I'm too divisive to sit on this board. I don't feel that way. I came to this board to be apolitical and to hope to bring some balance to the difference of opinions in this community. So I am, again, sad to hear what I heard tonight. I am behind administration's decision for what they did. And honestly, I've heard that signs haven't come down. I have heard that in many schools in the district, these policies are not being followed. That, too, is disheartening. So it was my issue to bring up. This is the point at which it can be addressed here tonight. That was my reason for doing it. I know it's discussion, but I just wanted to level with all of you, level with the community as to why I feel this is important. So thank you for hearing my comments.
Appreciate the background. Thank you, sir. Any other comments regarding this discussion item? All right. Ms. Baumgart?
Policy Committee is scheduled to meet next Tuesday at, here, 6:00 PM.
Next Tuesday at 6:00?
There's still some discussions that need to be taken place between Joe and me and some issues that may or may not be there for that, but at least at this point, it's scheduled.
All right. All right. So the next policy meeting is going to be on Tuesday at 6 o'clock. Thank you. Yes, we are moving on to Finance and Facility Committee. That presentation by Mr. McCaffrey.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I have two action items and five information items on the agenda this evening. First action item is approval of the Stormwater Maintenance Agreement. The committee discussed the stormwater maintenance agreement between the city of Waukesha and the school district. This is related to the recent site work done at Butler Middle School. The committee asked the administration to research what the district's exposure is if the stormwater plan does not meet the needs of the Butler campus. This item will be placed on a future FNF agenda for further consideration, and no action is required this evening. The second item under action items is the approval of the String Academy Contract. The committee discussed the contract extension for the String Academy contract for the 2021-2022 school year. Under the agreement, the cost per student remains the same and includes a maximum amount of funding the district will provide. The committee will continue to review this agreement on an annual basis, including student participation levels, to measure the viability of the program. The committee approved the 2021-2022 String Academy Contract, so no action is required by the board this evening. by the Board this evening. The first discussion information item on the agenda this evening is the Heating, Ventilation and Air Conditioning Report. Ring and Disha Two Engineering attended the meeting to review the findings of their district-wide HVAC report. Using the results of this study, the school district of Waukesha staff input, the administration presented a potential plan to improve building systems with the ultimate goal of bringing all building HVAC systems up to a level of operation to support MERV-13 filtration. The topic of HVAC improvements is complex and costly. The purpose of the presentation was to provide the committee a prioritized list the administration would recommend if the Board should decide to fund some or all of these improvements. The budget estimate for the full scope of work was $9 million. Next month, the Board will be discussing long-range budget planning and ESER funding. HVAC improvements will be part of that conversation. This is a discussion item, so does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Montiel.
Thank you. I was just going to touch off of Mr. McCaffrey's comments. This was spoke of extensively at the committee level, the report of Ring and Do. Their work has been really, really great. This is something we've discussed for more than a year about ventilation. We talked about plasma ionization last year. My understanding and my takeback was they are working extremely hard to try to point us and the administration in the direction of how do we best deal with this. They have done-- the report, I think, was great. Pointed out some interesting things I didn't even know. And as Mr. McCaffrey mentioned, they prioritized the solutions and what they suggest the best fit and kind of gave-- well, basically gave the Board a goalpost, and we can set it as wide as we want. You know, we don't have unlimited funds, but gave us a good path to go down. So if people are really interested about this, which I believe they are, please go and look at the committee video. And I believe the report is accessible, too. So thank you for the work that the administration did and the committee.
Any other discussion? Mr. Dietz.
I'm just really happy the committee is looking at all those issues, including air conditioning for all of our schools. In this day and age, in a work environment without air conditioning is almost unheard of. And we have several of our buildings in this district that don't have air conditioning. And I think for most people, they don't believe that. It's nice and cool in here, but some of our students and staff don't experience that, especially when we have several months when it's needed. So I'm glad we're seriously looking at all those things, especially looking at air conditioning in our schools.
Mr. McCaffrey?
Thank you. My next information discussion item is the monthly budget report. Revenues and expenditures are within budget limits for both the General and Special Education Fund. The district is operating in accordance with our approved budget in all other funds as well. Are there any budget questions? Excellent. Moving on. My third information discussion item is the federal COVID relief funding. Mr. Stack provided an update on the district's federal COVID relief funding, most of which comes from federal legislation. A summary of these funding sources is in Board Docs for your review, along with a summary of what the funds can be used for under each piece of legislation. ESER funding will be part of the budget planning discussions mentioned earlier in my report. Any questions about the COVID relief funding and ESER funds? Moving on. My next information discussion item is the Food Service Program update. The process for applying for free and reduced-priced meals was discussed. The administration is now working to improve the free and reduced lunch application outreach, which includes ideas to provide by community members. Further information on these efforts will be forthcoming. Demonstration of an online school store was presented, which would allow for the collection of donations to address some of the issues discussed at the last Board meeting. There is still work to be done to finalize this option, but progress is being made. So part of the discussion that we had on Monday was how easily we can move back and forth between the SSO and the National School Lunch Program. And we got an update today?
Yeah, DPI confirmed in writing today via email that the district, if they so choose, could opt back into the free and reduced lunch program if they so chose at any time during the school year. So yes, and in the end, DPI finally said you could move in or out or both ways and choose your program as you see fit.
Excellent. Is there any questions on the Food Service Program update?
I saw Mr. Zenobia first.
I was going to say ladies first.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions, and I did not get to watch all of the Finance Committee meeting. I was looking for this portion. And I see that there is a form here that deals with applications. And if these two things were covered, please let me know. But two things I think that would be interesting to know going forward in the program that we're in, the lunch program is, how much waste is there? And what is the student satisfaction of the program? I've been told that many students have very limited choices, and they don't like the food because it's bland or what have you. I know we can't please everybody. I'm just curious, given that option, what that looks like going forward. So those two items, I'm just curious about. Thank you.
So would you be interested in putting those on, having those added to FNF agenda for discussion?
If you would, please, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mrs. Zenobia?
Reinichek. Thank you. Mr. Clark, do you remember the details that Mrs. Stack was talking about regarding the extra money that was given to us for the food program? I want to say it was just a random offering given to us with no explanation, and it just was added to our--
Yeah, we-- after our August 30th meeting, so within a couple of days of that, we got notice from the USDA of-- I'm trying to-- $120,000 of funds that were to be used to help stabilize your food service program. It was one of the federal programs. I forget what legislation it was, and we didn't know the money was coming in. We haven't received the money yet. But it was part of a COVID response bill somewhere on the federal level. I can forward that email out maybe in the Friday update if you want to see the actual email from DPI. You can see the full story. I'm probably not doing it justice here.
Thank you. So it was from DPI? It's from the state or federal?
I believe it came from USDA, so federal level.
Okay.
The DPI might be administering it, but it was federal dollars.
So if that was for to stabilize the food program, could that be used to kind of be a net to catch some of the kids that we thought we were missing and go back to our free and reduced lunch program?
The brief-- again, we didn't-- we have a lot of research to do on these dollars, but the general consensus that Sherry and I came to was you have the same restrictions on this money as you do any other money that are in your food service program. So I'm not sure there's a direct way we could do that, but I'm not going to say-- until we actually get documentation on this, I can give you a firm answer.
Okay. When did it appear?
Got the email August 31st. Morning of August 31st.
When is the soonest-- when is the soonest we can put the-- bring this to the Board to vote? Because if we can go back to the free and reduced lunch program, and if we can come in and out of it, when's the soonest we could go back to the Board for a vote? Would it have to go back to FNF? Could it just come to the full Board?
That would be at the Board's discretion. I don't-- there's no guidelines that I'm aware of. It would be-- I mean, normally, we flow things through a committee on most issues, but that's really up to nine members of the Board and how you want to handle that.
Ready? Would I have to ask that at the end for future meetings? Or could I ask it now?
To be put on the next agenda, I think you can just ask Mr. McCaffrey to--
Are you talking about the FNF Committee or are you talking about the full Board meeting?
Whatever. We can just bring it right to the full Board? Then--
it's what you are asking. So if you wanted to go back through the committee so that we can all get, you know, more details on it together, and then it'll come-- can be brought forth to the October Board meeting.
Okay. So if it was for the committee being brought forth to the committee, then that only meets three days before the Board meeting? So we could have it in a committee and then talk about it and then have action at the Board meeting?
Is that your request?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. McCaffrey?
Yeah, so send an email to Darren and I. Send an email to Darren and I, and then we can agendize it.
Okay. Should I sum up what-- if they can't hear what I just said?
Oh, we can't hear. It's very--
So we are asking that this be brought back-- the vote be brought back to the FNF Committee meeting next month, and then three days later, it will be brought before the Board to vote again on the going back to free and reduced lunch.
McCaffrey, have that for your--
Yes.
--committee.
Excellent.
All right. Mr. Dietz?
I would just like to-- we have a lot of--
Here, your microphone, please.
If we go that route of looking at that next month at Finance and Facilities, which sounds like we will, I just hope people come prepared with ways to help those students that are caught in the middle and the kids that are not being served in this district. So that's my comment.
Any other discussion? All right. Mr. McCaffrey?
Thank you. My next item is the Fund Balance Report. The committee reviewed the fund balances for each fund in the district's budgets as of June 30, 2021. Board Policy 6250 provides a framework as to how the district should manage this topic. The Board Policy defines how we should measure operational fund balance and sets a minimum recommended operational fund balance at 15% of anticipated general and special education funds expenditure budgets. Based on this measure, the district is currently at 23.91 fund balance. Any questions about the fund balance? What we do with it? What it looks like? Anything? Mr. Montiel-- oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Montiel.
Sorry. I guess for President-- or President Como's sake, since he's not here, he gave a very good explanation at the committee level of what the fund balance is, why it's important, how it deals with our bond rating, how it gives our district fiscal-- I wouldn't say certainty, but as much as we can. It's not a piggy bank to some extent. There are restricted funds. There are funds that we are, as a Board, free to use. But it is-- and it's also receivable, so it's not just this huge pot of money. He explained it much better than I just did, but it's a big issue, especially with the declining enrollment issues we have and rightsizing all coming up. So people should-- if they have questions, please look at that committee video, and Mr. Como does a good ask-- good job of explaining it, so.
Yeah, right.
Mr. Clark?
We'll probably also touch on fund balance as part of our long-range budget discussions next month. So the numbers are out there. It's a good summary report of all of our funds and where the balances ended the last fiscal year. But, you know, those dollars, I think, have to be part of that overall conversation we'll be having in October.
All right. Thank you. Mr. McCaffrey?
Just one point on that that Mr. Como made was that the fund balance is just not a bank account full of money. And it's important to realize that we don't have millions and millions of dollars in fund balance sitting in a bank account somewhere that we're drawing on. So that's a key distinction on what fund balance actually is. All righty. The next FNF meeting is October 11th, 5:30 in the Boardroom. And that, Madam Vice President, concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to the Teaching and Learning Committee presented by Mr. Dietz.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The last Teaching and Learning Committee meeting was held on September 7, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. here in the Boardroom. Two action items and four discussion information items appear on the agenda for teaching and learning this evening. Our first action item is for our approval of the At-Risk Identification Plan. Wisconsin Statute 118.153 requires the Board to approve the district's at-risk identification plan every school year. Luke Pinion, our Director of Student Services, shared the details regarding our district's process and procedures around this. Our processes are aligned well to state statute, and we provide clear guidance and support to all school teams using this process. The only changes moving into the 2021-2022 school year are in regard to the data sources we are utilizing. Specifically, last year, we had minimal data as a result of the pandemic, and some assessments were not administered. This year, we will have the state's forward exam again, similar to the pre-pandemic years, as well as our fall measures of academic progress or MAP data to utilize our identification process. On a vote of four to zero, the Teaching and Learning Committee approved the district's processes and procedures for identifying at-risk students in grades 5 through 12. We request Board approval and ISO move.
Is there a second? Mr. Baumgart?
Yes.
All right. Motion and second. Any further discussion? All right. Sue, please.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia?
Aye.
Karen Reinichek?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye.
Cory Montiel?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye. Passes eight, zero. Thank you. Mr. Dietz?
Our second item is for the approval of our elementary social studies textbooks and resources. During the 2020-2021 school year, the school district of Waukesha's Elementary Social Studies team met monthly to forward the work of piloting and determining a viable instructional resource for kindergarten through fifth grade. This team has presented to the Teaching and Learning Committee on the inquiry design model, the key shifts in social studies standards, and the results of the first piloted resource. At the August Teaching and Learning Committee meeting, they reviewed the outcomes and their pilot surveys and shared their plan for continued collaboration, curriculum development, and professional learning in preparation for the implementation in the fall of 2022. Melissa Yao, our Director of Elementary Learning, and Dee Garcia, our Director of Multilingual and Global Education, recommended the McGraw-Hill resources titled Impact for kindergarten through fifth grade. They answered questions around the budget details, their professional learning plan for teachers, and the curriculum work that lies ahead. On a vote of four to zero, the Teaching and Learning Committee approved the McGraw-Hill Impact Social Studies resources as presented for kindergarten through fifth grade. We request Board approval and ISO move.
Thank you. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Montiel, thank you. Any discussion? Dr. Piasik?
Thank you. I do have a few comments about the history-- the social studies textbooks, excuse me. I did go through all of them. I read them in detail. I think it's important, as Board members, if we are being asked to approve textbooks, that we actually read those textbooks and know what's in them. So that was important to me. There-- it's not perfect. There are things there that I wish weren't. I think they may not be completely appropriate in some instances, but I do think that the collection itself is balanced. I think that it is age-appropriate as the graphics and the text kind of grows in complexity with the grade level. There are some things in the fifth-grade book that I think probably don't belong there. And I think that we are really depending on our teachers at this point to bring the appropriate curriculum to the classroom. And I think the context around how that curriculum is delivered is going to be very important. There's one thing I just wanted to point out, and I'm going to ask the Teaching and Learning Committee and administration to assist us with this, and that is just that the second-grade book was not available for us to review. There is a section in the second-grade book on social justice, and I would like to ask that we review that as a committee once that text is available. I'm taking under consideration of the rest of the materials, that I am assuming that it will be balanced and that it will be fair, but I think that's an important component that we do need to review.
Have that? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Piasik. Any other comments? All right. Sue, if you please, take the roll call.
Cory Montiel?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Karen Reinichek?
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye. Thank you. Passes eight, zero. Mr. Dietz?
Our first discussion information item was an AVID update. AVID stands for Advancement Via Individual Determination. Amanda Wagner, our secondary AVID coordinator, and Yasmin Duran, our elementary AVID coordinator, provided an update to the Teaching and Learning Committee on the status of our AVID programs district-wide. This included expansion-- This included expansion into 10 of our schools, or telling of our element, or into 10 of our elementary schools, north and south high schools, and steady growth of the program at six secondary schools. North High School was provided with, they were earning the title of distinction, and South High School has been, they have actually earned the title of a national school of demonstration. Professional development for our staff was reviewed and successes were highlighted, including college acceptances and scholarship dollars that were awarded to our AVID students. Any discussion on that or questions, comments?
Don't say anything?
Our second discussion information item was the reading state statute and our educational process goals. Melissa Yao, our Director of Elementary Learning, provided this yearly required report, an appropriate, valid, and reliable assessment of literacy fundamentals selected by the board or the operator of each charter school established under 118, State Statute 118.40 parentheses 2R, or 18, State Statute 118.40 parentheses 2X of Wisconsin statutes, shall be administered annually to each student enrolled in four-year-old kindergarten through second grade. The board or operator of each charter school established under these state statutes shall require that the assessment selected evaluates whether a student possesses phonemic awareness and letter sound knowledge. In keeping with our board policy 2131.01, reading instructional goals in kindergarten assessment, Melissa reviewed our district literacy theory action for the 2021-2022 school year. She also reviewed the two types of assessments that are used in the school district of Waukesha: phonological awareness, literacy screening, or PALS, and measures of academic progress or MAP. Any discussion, comments, or questions on that?
Go ahead, Mr. Dietz.
Okay. Our third discussion information item was assessing curricular, or the assess, access of curricular units and lessons for parents. Rachel Herman, our Director of Secondary Learning, Dee Garcia, our Director of Multilingual and Global Education, Melissa Yao, our Director of Elementary Learning, and Dan Poczynski, a math instructional coach, presented an update around how families can access the curriculum within the school district of Waukesha. They gave a board overview of where families can go to find the overreaching standards and the curricular maps utilized within the districts, which are located on our website. Next, they showed how families can access Blackboard, our learning management system, and then they detailed information around how families can navigate through the platform to view the learning activities, curricular resources, and general course information for the classes that their children are enrolled in within the school district. Should parents still need help assessing their students' Blackboard accounts, they should please contact their school directly for assistance in this area. Any discussion or questions, comments with that?
Dr. Piasik?
Thank you. I do have just a few comments. And first, just to acknowledge that I understand that it took some pretty quick and hard work to prepare the Blackboard piece and to provide that communication to parents. I think we still have a problem with too many systems. We have Blackboard, we have Google Docs, we have Infinite Campus, and we have any number of classroom apps and special classroom apps. So as a parent, on behalf of parents that I've spoken to, the system is still, it's too complex for parents to understand what's going on in the classroom and to help their students meet the educator's expectations. As far as the systems, and Blackboard is very sophisticated. I've talked to several students who don't care for it. They find it complicated. I think parents that have tried to get into it find it complicated. So it's going to take some time. We really have to, we have to commit to it. The system itself is only going to be as good as the amount of information that we actually put in it. So I know right now we're just getting started and it's kind of, it's a redirect for parents to start there, but most classes have very little information in Blackboard, and they will redirect the students to Google Docs, but the parents don't have access to Google Docs. So I think we've, I think this is a good step forward, but I think we have a lot of room to go in order to have full transparency, and I think that's the goal. So I would just ask that we continue to work on minimization of the applications and consolidation of the applications so that the information for the parents, the kids, and the teachers is all in the same place.
Sounds good. Anything else?
Go ahead.
Our last discussion information item is, this evening, is library book selection process update. The district believes that all children deserve access to quality books and literary materials. As part of our literacy instructional framework, we also believe the importance of choice reading, in which students pick books based on their individual reading levels and preferences. There are three primary locations within a school in which students go to select reading materials: the school library, ebook databases, and also classroom libraries. In each of these locations, our goal is to provide a wide array of topics, genres, and perspectives. Rachel Herman, our Director of Secondary Learning, shared information on how the library media specialists select materials for the library, specifically focusing on the use of board policy, library guidelines, and national reputable reviews. In the addition, in addition, the details of a new parent guardian notification system for books that are checked out from the school library was shared with the board. There was also discussion around our ebook app called Sora. Parents, or let's see, any parents could request this app to be blocked from their children's iPad if they want it. Parents can also access ebook checkouts on their children's iPads. As of our last meeting last Wednesday, our students no longer have access to ebooks that have not been onboarded through the school district of Waukesha process. Lastly, the district will be utilizing BookSource, an online classroom library management system, which provides our teachers with an analysis of their classroom libraries. Using this platform, over the course of the 2021-2022 school year, the goal is to inventory and publish classroom libraries for parents and families to have access to, to help the teaching and learning team better understand the strengths and areas of improvement in our classroom libraries, and to develop a plan of action to continually enhance our classroom libraries across all 23 of our district's schools. And then just some concluding comments here. Parents and guardians who have a concern about specific texts found in our libraries should work with their teachers, their principal, the school library staff to resolve the concern. If there are books which present significant concerns, a complaint can be filed with the Office of the Superintendent through our board policy 9130.01. Board members should continue to look for reoccurring updates in our Friday board packets regarding this issue.
Thank you. This is also a discussion item. Any, Mr. McCaffrey?
Do we have the ability for the ebooks to send an email to the parents when it's checked out so they don't have to dig through the iPad or whatever device they're using? So if you check it out, an email gets sent out, I'm assuming through Infinite Campus, or if we could set it up in app?
So, Mr. McCaffrey, currently we're working with Sora, which is our online ebook system because they do not have the notification set up, and that's what we're wanting, similar to the print version that we have.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussing? Dr. Piasik?
I was just building to anyone else. I've had the floor for some time. Thank you. We did talk about this at TNL. I want to bring up just some specific concerns again, and there's also been some more information that's been shared that I want to make sure is transparent to everyone. It's not so much an issue about how long some of these books have been there, it's an issue that they are there right now. There have been some steps taken to remove some books, and I think that's an important process that needs to continue. Unfortunately, what I've seen in some of the reviews that led up to placing these books in our libraries is that it was very clear in those reviews that there were age ranges or there were, there was content of those books that just was not appropriate for the ages that they were made available to, and those books remained. So I mentioned this at TNL. I don't see this as a problem. I see this as an emergency, right? We have sexually explicit material available to 11, 12, 13-year-olds. I do appreciate the work being done with the, with the devices, and I understand that it's not just our district that has that problem, but to Mr. McCaffrey's point, one of the problems is that a user of the app can actually delete their history. And Ms. Landish has told us that there is the ability to still get that history, but a parent has to specifically ask. So it's not visible to a parent if they're simply looking at the device what's actually been checked out. I have heard from parents saying that, you know, they, they think that it's a parent's choice and that the children have a right to have access to these materials. There's no gray area for me here. I do not believe it's appropriate for detailed and sexually explicit material to be put in our children's hands in, in the context of education on educational devices, devices paid for by our taxpayers, on apps paid for by our taxpayers. I did look into the state statutes and regulations around this. If any one of us as a private citizen were to hand one of these books to a child, it would be a class-one felony. But under the umbrella of a school district and elected school board members, we are exempt from that. That is completely bizarre and unacceptable to me. We need to, we need to take this seriously, and we need to move quickly to making these materials unaccessible to our children. This should be a deep concern to all of us. I don't suspect there's a whole lot of disagreement, but I speak for myself here, and I get it. They've been there for a long time, but they're still there. They're there every time we have a meeting, every time we have this conversation, and I think this is a really important issue that we move, need to move as quickly as possible on. I made the comment at TNL that if we cannot control what's moving through the apps, that maybe we should remove the app, at least until we can control it. The feedback that I got from parents who disagreed with me said, "Well, nobody uses the app anyway, so why would you want to remove it?" I would say maybe as fiscal responsibility, we should remove the app if nobody's using it. So I really would like to understand what we could do about not making it so easy to get these things. And I think unfortunately, this conversation that continues for several months makes it even more interesting to some of the students, so.
Thank you. Just to clarify, Ms. Landish, can you remind me, please, was it mentioned at the TNL that parents do have the ability to remove an app from the devices?
They do. They can not only place restrictions on apps that are currently on their child's iPad, but they could remove the app altogether. Now, that's not to say a child could reinstall an app. We all know how that works, right? But they do have, do have that parental permission and access to do that. Some parents just don't quite know how to work apps similarly on a cell phone, just the weekly screenings and things like that, because apps and technology are complex for a parent. So we have asked our librarians and our tech people at our schools to be able to support the parents. If you do have questions specifically on the app and you do not want your child to have access to that, that that can happen immediately per parent's choice.
Thank you. Dr. Piasik?
If I could, I just had one other comment, and I think it was mentioned in the, in the comments at some point tonight. I, I would agree that the communication that went out to parents that described the opt-in for library books was a good step. Unfortunately, I don't think it explained the reason that parents might want to opt-in, and I would like to at least put on the table that we should consider an opt-out. I think this is something that people don't completely understand, why would we, why we would be offering this, and I think we should err on the side of overcommunicating.
From whose office that came out of? I'm looking the wrong way. That letter came out of the TNL? Yep. So can either you and Dr. Piasik meet offline or something that we can get a letter with more detail, just kind of as a reminder to, you know, parents? We get a lot of emails in our inboxes and things kind of get lost, so if that's something we can work, work on. Mr. McCaffrey?
Dr. Piasik, I think you're talking about, not a letter, you're talking about you have to actually opt out of the email instead of opting in, correct?
Right, right. There was the communication that came out that explained how parents could
Right.
opt into notifications, and, and I would, I would like to offer that we should only allow them to opt out. I think there might be some, there'd be some parents who would opt out. But I do think it would be appropriate to communicate again, because I think that got lost in some of the beginning of the school year, and I don't think it was clear why we were offering the option to get those notifications. The concern is that children might have access to materials that are not age-appropriate.
I would agree. I think that it should be an opt-out and not an opt-in, so everybody gets it, and if you don't want it, you have to check the box and say, "I don't want it." I think that that's the way the system should work.
Thank you for that input. Mr. Dietz?
Ms. Landish, could you remind us what we talked about at the last Teaching and Learning Committee meeting about the state statute regarding students in our district age 16 and older?
Sorry about that.
No, it's fine.
So the state statute you are referring to is 4330, and it talks about information cannot be disclosed to parents or guardians for children who are, oh, can be disclosed, excuse me, to parents or guardians for children under the age of 16, but 16 or over, which is a lot of our sophomores, juniors, and seniors then. This would not apply to, so parents that do have children at that age level cannot by statute opt out. So I'm hearing and taking notes from the board members on what perhaps suggestions would be, but that is not, the state statute says that those parents cannot opt out 16 or older.
Mr. McCaffrey?
Yeah, yeah, I totally understand that, but so then we can get the vast majority of the students. We could, we could just have it where that isn't opt-in, if that's the statute. Do we opt-in at that age and then opt-out anything below it?
So, oh, excuse me. Did you have your hand up, Mr. Zanobia?
Just a clarification to the discussion we're having. So every, all children under 16 would be automatically opted out, or every parent would have to go and opt them out? Is that what, is that what we're saying? The parent would have to do?
I would want the parent to have to go in and uncheck the box to receive notifications. The box is automatically checked.
Notify them.
To notify them. And then the parent would actually have to go in, you know, consciously go in, uncheck that box, and let us know that they don't want us to receive those notifications. And then above that, the statute states that you would have to opt in.
I had just sent you all an email about a list of books, some of which we discussed, that's been circulating the state of other school districts having this problem. Why can we not, as an administration, pull those books and make them unavailable to everyone unless there is some type of specific checkout policy for books that we deem unacceptable? If not, box them up altogether. I think Dr. Piasik makes a very important point. These materials do not belong in the hands of young children. There's, there's one book that was brought up during the meeting a month ago. I believe the name of it is, this book is gay. And what alarmed me about what was read was that there was something in that book that told kids, encouraged kids to go on a dating app. Now, I understand that kids, and especially those in secondary school, have phones, have computers, have iPads, they can do what they want on those, but we are providing kids And we are providing them materials that they could potentially date on dating sites with adults. I can't imagine the liability that that opens up all of us to. That is beyond inappropriate and one of the most alarming things I heard, that we would be in a position to say it's okay for kids to even go down that path, given something they were given in school, by us, not by other students, not by anyone else, by this board, by this administration. Board, by this administration. I believe administration can act on materials that we already know are unsuitable for kids of a certain age, that are now available to kids in middle schools and younger. I think emergency was a great word to use. I think we're at that point, this should be acted on, and I know administration can do it immediately.
Mr. Baumgart?
Yeah, just a point and a question. First of all, don't think that nothing has been removed, because that is not the truth. There are, some of the books have already been removed. I was told that as early as this morning. So, I don't know which books, but some have been removed because they are flat-out wrong. Not all of them, we have, we have a ways to go. So, that's one point. The other point, I want to go back to the opt-in, opt-out question. Were we saying that initially, everybody is opted in, and then we take them out?
We don't take them out. They have to take themselves out.
But by having everybody automatically opting in, are we not creating a bigger problem because of the people that have access to things that they shouldn't have access to? As opposed to?
Well, the opting in is just, is notification of whether the student is accessing the information. Correct?
Not that he has the access, okay.
Yeah, so what, so basically what, and I had talked to some people in the administration, is what I wanted is anytime a child checks something out, Infinite Campus would send an email and say, "Hey, this is what your kid's got."
Yeah.
So, to opt, so what would happen is you'd automatically get that email, and the parent would have to log into Infinite Campus or however they're running it, on whatever server, and check the box that they don't want to receive that information.
Okay.
You'll automatically get that information.
Okay.
If you're under the age of 16, if your child is under the age of 16.
Yeah, I didn't know about that part, but.
Yeah, so it's not, like, yeah, it's not opting into the access to the information, it's, it's opting, yeah. So, they know, the parents know what their kids are, are looking at.
Thank you, Patrick.
Dr. Piasik?
Thank you. How many books have been removed since this topic started?
I don't have the list in front of me. A handful have definitely been misplaced in terms of grade level appropriateness. So, there were several that were at the middle school level where the reviews would come out as being perhaps recommended grades, eighth grade through 12th grade. And so, if a book sits currently as an eighth grader, we know that sixth and seventh graders then could potentially have access to that. And so, through our, our reading process, the librarians have moved several of those just to the high school level. What we're seeing with a certain author in a series right now in particular is that the scholarly reviews, as we were mentioning, that take place, several of this book series was listed as a young adult and therefore didn't have specific grade level parameters on it. And so, those are, again, to your point of emergency, those are the handful of books we're currently reviewing, again, just to see, when they look at the actual text that are, that have been brought to our attention, if they indeed are grade level appropriate or not. So, that's an ongoing weekly process now. We've set up what are called huddles. We have book huddles now once a week with our five librarians, so that we can intentionally go through that weeding process, like they always have every year, but we've really never been involved with that process at the district level, but we are now.
Follow-up with a comment?
Yes.
Thank you. And I appreciate that. It sounds like quite a bit of work to go through with each one of those books, and I think that is my concern to Mr. Zenobia's point, you know, why don't we just remove them all? I think it's really important right now that those notifications are there and that that awareness is there, because first, we have to find them all. I do think that we should always err on the side of caution, if that means not having them or having them only for 17, 18-year-olds or whatever is required. I would just offer, in having reviewed some of the reviews on the books, there were some books, in particular, one that came up at a previous Board meeting in public comments, where the reviews provided by the service that we have didn't even come close to describing the graphic nature of the book. You know, it described a romantic relationship between a child and an adult, but it did not describe some 15 or 20 explicit scenes in the book between those two individuals. So, I do have concerns that the services that we're relying on to describe for us what's actually in the books are not making a fair representation of what's in the books. So, and again, for those parents who have reprimanded me for wanting to ban books or pull literary works of art off the shelves, I'm actually concerned that there are other books that we don't have in the library, but this, this isn't about learning materials. This is, these are choice books, what we're calling them. There's no educational or learning content whatsoever. And again, I am very concerned that those reviews with, and I understand if we place in 8,000 books a year in our libraries, maybe we can't read them all, but I'm sure somebody in our community would read them. You know, so I think we need to look at this, these very long lists of books that are considered problematic or controversial, and err on the side of making those difficult to get before we can actually dig in to decide if they should come off the shelves or not.
Thank you for that. Now, oh, excuse me, Mr. Zenobia?
Just one follow-up question. I did watch Ms. Herman's presentation on this, and again, to the 8,000 books that we purchase every year, those books are only reviewed by five librarians, or is there a bigger group of people that reviews those books? Do they review on recommendations, or is that the responsibility of five people? Is my question.
Currently, our staff of librarians across the system are five professionals, correct? And they use that common process of reviewing the multiple national scholarly reviews, but actual people making those purchases through the common school funds, yes, are, are those five people.
My only comment to that would be, that's, it's a lot of books to review by five people, given the fact that some of the recommendations aren't accurate, depending on who writes them. And that's not an indictment of the librarians in any way. That's just, it's a massive volume to, to handle. My other question, and maybe this is just something TNL can answer next time they meet. If we purchase 8,000 books a year, how many of those books are taken out or assigned? I mean, what percentage of those books are utilized that year or the next year even? I mean, again, to me, it sounds like a lot in a school district of not even double that.
Is automated such that any book that is checked out, we have the number of occurrences that it is checked out over the years by time of purchase, so we do have those records.
Okay. Good. Thank you. One, one final thing from, from Ms. Herman's presentation, kind of off, on the same topic, obviously, but she had mentioned the in-class libraries and how there's going to be an audit process that's going to be taking place. And I'm impressed that there is now an auditing process in place for that reason, and perhaps we can slide this to the new business, but I do think this process, if we are going to start drilling down to the classroom level, should be expanded, not only to in-class libraries, but curriculums and lesson plans for other reasons. So, that's more just a general comment. I think that's great work. I appreciate that. I think that needs to be bigger, without taking away from what is already happening. I don't want to discourage that in any way. I'm just saying, that idea, that process can probably be used for other things, and I would like to see that applied in the future, in new business.
All right. Thank you. Did you get that, Mr. Dietz?
Thank you.
Very good. All right. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. That concludes the Teaching and Learning Committee report for this evening. Our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 5th, at 6:00 p.m. here in the Board Room.
Great. Thank you very much. We have our last agenda item for the evening, recommendations for future Board or Committee action or discussion items. Several, several were shared throughout the meeting, but if there's any additional, please do share those now. All right. See you none. Thank you so very much, everybody, for your time and attention and work. We are adjourned.